Okay, I'd like to call the Community Development Supplemental Grant Public Hearing to Order. Dana, will you call the role, please?
Sue Grodick.
Yeah.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Stephen Coyle.
Here.
Andy Selhertz.
Here.
Matt Mosley.
Here.
Aaron Borowski.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
And we're going to hear from our engineer, Mr. Henry, you're going to come up and talk about the supplemental grant.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. You get to see me again. So this is the Community Development Supplemental Grant. It's a $50,000 grant that's given to forty, to the 53 communities who are optional to it, to apply for it. This is from the casino money that the county distributes back out to the communities. This is for anything we would like to use that would benefit the community itself. We have to have this public hearing. In the, in the past, we've, we used this $50,000 to use it for beautification for our, our homes, and it's delved out through the building department. The idea was that we do the same thing again this year for this $50,000. We have received it, at least since I've been here, at least the last two, three, two or three years. And then we've also applied earlier in the year for the, the Community Development Block Grant for the $150,000 for the senior center across the street that isn't part of this, but we have to follow the same procedure. So we've advertised this, there is a sign-in sheet, so everybody that is here, if you could sign in, there's a sign-in sheet there, and there's also a sign-in sheet on that side. After we have this public hearing, to hear comments about these, how to utilize or to apply for the $50,000, we'll take, and we'll have an ordinance on the agenda for the next council meeting. We have to have it seven days after, seven days prior to the next council meeting, and then we'll apply for this grant. It's in the middle of November, I think November 12th is our filing deadline. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? So this is for the home exterior grants that we provide to our residents?
That's correct.
Okay. I just have one comment. I mentioned it last year also. Last year, I had a couple of residents reach out to me because there was at least one year where we, it wasn't solely for the exterior, and we included if someone added a bathroom to their home, providing that they were at least eligible to apply. And I had a couple of residents reach out to me, I, you know, had brought it up, so if we could consider that again, I think it would help, be helpful to some of our residents to include that as well.
Understood.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Any members of the public have anything they would like to either ask questions about or any other suggestions they may have on how to use these funds? Okay. And I would ask that everyone who's here to please sign in, as Mr. Henry mentioned, we have to send in the sign-in sheets when we apply for the grant. So it's helpful for us to show that we did have residents attend the hearing, so please make sure you sign in when you get a moment. Okay, anyone else? Okay?
Have you recognized?
Yes.
Yeah, just one thing to add, and this will be in the budget when we talk about it, but the plan is to match this with another $50,000 from cities' funds as well, and I'm not opposed to what Mrs. Pucci said to, to open that up, that would be fine with me if no one objects.
Okay. And I know matching it helps us with our scoring.
So I will say also that we had, the, the applications were abundant this last year, and so we actually, we weren't able to, to give to everyone, but we were able to help a lot of people. So I think it's a really, really good, good program.
Okay.
May I be right?
Yes.
I wasn't going to say it, but I am. This is truly one of my favorite things that we do in our city. I hear so much positive feedback about it, and I think anything that we can do along these lines, it's wonderful that we get a grant, it's wonderful that we can put some of our own city budget towards it. It's just one of my favorite programs.
Anyone else? Okay, we need a motion to adjourn the public hearing, please.
So moved.
Second.
That's Stephen.
Thank you, Mr. Henry.
To adjourn, Sue Grodick.
Yeah.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Aaron Borowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Okay, now I'd like to call the Brooklyn City Council Meeting to order. Dana, will you call the role, please?
Sue Grodick.
Yeah.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Stephen Coyle.
Here.
Andy Selhertz.
Here.
Matt Mosley.
Here.
Aaron Borowski.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Will everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
What's going on down there? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And this evening, we have opening remarks by Councilman Borowski.
Thank you, Council President. This October, the American Cancer Society commemorates the 40th anniversary of the founding of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. In 1985, the American Cancer Society co-led the effort to start Breast Cancer Awareness Month as a week-long campaign to educate women on the importance of early screening, routine mammograms for breast cancer detection and treatment. In 2025, more than 300, pardon me, 316,000 women are expected to be diagnosed with invasive breast cancer in the United States, making the efforts of the Awareness Month increasingly important. As we look back at the 40 years of breast cancer awareness, the number 40 is significant. Breast cancer mortality is down more than 40%, and 40 is when women should start having a conversation with their doctor about getting a mammogram, according to Dr. Arif Camille, Chief Patient Officer at the American Cancer Society. As we as a city undoubtedly have residents, even friends and family that are dealing with this disease, let's take a moment to pause and reflect on those that are fighting, those that will someday fight, and a moment to reflect on those that we have lost. Currently, right now, I ask for a moment of silence.
Thank you. We have minutes from our September 22 meeting to approve any corrections or additions. Okay, we need a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
To approve the minutes, Sue Grodick.
Yeah.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Aaron Borowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
At this time, we'll have the first public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say pertaining to a legislative item on the agenda, please step forward, state your name and address, and you will be recognized. Please remember to observe our five-minute time limit. Okay, see, no one will move forward. Next, we'll move on to reports of committees, commissions, and boards. First, I'll provide the Committee of the Whole report. The Committee of the Whole did meet earlier this evening at 6:15 PM and addressed the following agenda items. There's a liquor permit request from JJ3580 Ridge Road LLC. This is the gas station that's on Ridge Road between the railroad tracks and Dennison, and they're requesting a permit C1, C2, and D6. C1 is beer only in original sealed container for carryout only. C2, wine and mixed beverages in sealed containers for carryout only. And then D6 would be the Sunday sales. The Committee of the Whole did recommend that council take a position of not objecting to it, and our police chief does not have any objections to this. Notification from the Fire Department, we were awarded the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation Safety Intervention Grant in the amount of $31,106.26. This grant will be used for the purchase of one chest compression device and one powered stair chair for the Brooklyn Fire Department. Under old business, up for, on third reading and adoption, Resolution 2025-23, the committee recommended that council adopt this. This is a resolution appointing a council member, a citizen, and an addiction specialist to serve on the opioid settlement advisory task force and declaring an emergency. When this is on the floor of council, we will amend it to insert those names. Resolution 2025-24, also on third reading, up for adoption, a resolution requesting the county fiscal officer to advance taxes from the proceeds of the 2025 tax levies pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section 321.34, and declaring an emergency. Resolution 2025-28, which is on first reading, which, with a request to suspend the rules, a resolution approving the selection of the Albert M. Higley Company, LLC, DBA, Higley Construction as best value construction manager at risk, and authorizing an agreement for pre-construction services and declaring an emergency. The reason for adopting under suspension of the rules is to keep this on schedule. This is for our rec center improvements, and the city will be developing the contract over the next couple of weeks with this contractor. Ordinance 2025-20, on first reading, also with a request to suspend the rules, and ordinance authorizing the updated capital improvement plan for 2025 and declaring an emergency. In our 2026 budget, we had money allocated for the SCBA's for our fire department, and when they went to research the prices in preparation for our budget meetings, they discovered that if we order them this year, we will save $168,000. So we're just moving this from 2026 into the 2025 capital budget. And that completes my report for the Committee of the Whole. Next, we'll have the Recreation Board, Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. Brooklyn youth basketball for grades three to six, boys and girls, for the winter season, November 2025 through March 2026, weeknight practices and Saturday games. There will be an eight-game regular season plus playoffs. Volunteer coaches are needed. Let us know registration if you can coach. Practices and home games to be held at the Brooklyn Middle School Fieldhouse. Practice to begin the week of November 3, and games to begin December. Volunteer coaches will manage teams, and parents will be contacted in November by their assigned coach. Away games to be held at Middleburg Heights, Brook Park, North Olmsted, North Ridgeville, Columbia Station, Fairview Park, Westlake, and Strongsville. Registration is now open through October 17 at www.brooklynrec.com. Brooklyn's Learn to Skate will be held on Fridays and Saturdays, October 17 through December 6. There are a variety of skill sets for ages three to five and ages six to 15. Skaters will explore fun skating skills as well as learn and focus on skills needed for a team event at local skating competitions. For pricing and additional information, please contact the rec center at 216-351-5334 or email at recinfo@brooklynohio.gov. Senior Center, October events include October 16, luncheon at noon, chili, costs $6, registration required. October 20, bingo and trivia with Capel Phone at 1:00 PM. October 22, Cogga Valley Scenic Railroad bus trip, meet at the Senior Center at 8:00, 8:00 AM, costs $30, registration is open. October 22, pumpkin painting with Oak Street Health, 12:00 PM, free event, registration required. United Healthcare, Medicare speaker, 1:00 PM. Make your own coaster at Brooklyn Library Innovation Center. Limited spots available, you must register at the Senior Center, prices may, prices vary depending on materials used, please meet at the Brooklyn Library at 2:00 PM. October 23, luncheon at noon, stuffed pepper soup and sloppy joes, costs $8, registration is open. October 28, mystery lunch, meet at the Senior Center at 11:30 AM, space limited, registration is now open. Costs $3 for a bus, pay for your own meal. October 29, bingo with King David Campus at 1:00 PM. October 31, stop in for a sweet treat, starting at 9:00 AM, there is a limited amount. Thanksgiving luncheon, catering by Carino, is on Thursday, November 20, 12, costs $20. Please call 216-635-4222 to register. The next recreation meeting will be held on October 15, in the Rec Center Meeting Room at 7:00 PM, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next is Domestic Relations Commission, Councilman Borowski.
Thank you. At the recent Home Days that occurred last month, the Domestic Relations Commission, along with the help from members of the Connecting and Belonging Commission, held a table spot for one day of the event. Over the course of the day, we handed out trinkets, pens, bags, and most importantly, literature for home day attendees to grab that had information on assistance with abuse and neglect. Overall, it was a wonderful day for the event, a wonderful weekend. Thanks for all that helped out and helped to plan the event. The next meeting will be taking place on November 12 at 6:00 PM. Meeting location and agenda still being planned and will be posted accordingly, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commission, Councilwoman Grodick.
Thank you. Very short. The Planning Commission's next meeting is scheduled Wednesday, November 5, at 6:00 PM, if there are any applications to consider. And the Board of Zoning Appeals' October meeting was canceled due to a lack of applications. The next scheduled meeting is Thursday, November 20, at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Next is the Yes Committee, Councilman Mosley.
Thank you, Council President. The Youth Engagement Committee met last Friday, October 10, at the Fire Station Community Room. Together, they discussed narrowing the amount of goals and ideas that they had so that they could streamline their work process. We all looked at other youth initiatives from other cities and to see what we could implement in Brooklyn. After the workshop portion of the meeting, Captain Williams gave the group a tour of the fire station. The next meeting for the Yes Committee is scheduled for November 10 at 5:00 PM in the City Hall Community Room. This was done on purpose because the committee wanted to attend and experience a council meeting in person, and it's just before that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Connecting and Belonging Commission, Councilman Coyle.
Thank you, Council President, and good evening, everyone. Please be advised that the Connecting and Belonging Commission has scheduled their next meeting for a week from today, Tuesday, October 21 at 6:00 PM in the City Hall Community Room. All are welcome to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have reports of council, and this evening, we begin with Councilwoman Grodick.
Thank you. First, I would like to thank Councilman Borowski for your opening remarks. I'm still sitting here thinking about them. I, I think most of us know someone, whether it's friends or relatives who have had to battle breast cancer, and I'm thinking in my mind just right now, a dear friend who's battling it now, and one who battled it successfully last year. And I'm so glad that not only is our awareness heightened, but also the success rates are increasing every year. Thank you for those opening remarks and making me pause and think about my friends and relatives. I also would like to remind everybody that early voting in person ends on November 2. It's already started. The hours vary, the closer it gets to Election Day, the more hours there are. So you really need to check the website for information. And also, a reminder that the Board of Elections has moved, the new address is 1803 Superior Avenue. Vote by mail applications, which are very popular in Brooklyn, to apply, you must apply by October 28, and your ballot must be postmarked by November 3, or returned in person downtown by 7:30 on election night. And Election Day is November 4, 6:30 AM to 7:30 PM. A reminder, if you normally vote at the high school, you have a temporary voting location because of high school gym renovations. This probably will be our last time of being moved, since the renovations so far are on time and should be finished by, to that, beginning of 2026. Even though it is local elections, they are so important, please don't let the fact that it's a limited ballot in Brooklyn keep you home. Voting for our, your local representatives, in my opinion, is just as important as voting for state and national representation. So please make sure you go and vote between now and November 4. Two other short things, I would like to thank the Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce for organizing a wonderful Home Days. I hope it's the start of a new tradition. I also would like to thank Councilman Mosley for encouraging city council to have a table there. I think we had great conversations with residents, and there was a lot of interest in the master plan survey, so thanks for bringing that to the Home Days with us. Many people were interested in sharing their opinion, and I'd love to know if maybe the, the survey responses increased a little bit after, because we were handing out paper ones and people were scanning the codes. I'd love to know if there was a little bump after that weekend. And lastly, I'd like to congratulate the Brooklyn School District on opening the Brooklyn Early Childhood Center. I had a chance to tour the building, and it is a fantastic use of a much-loved but very outdated library, and it is a great opportunity for some of our youngest residents and their families. So rumor has it, there will be some events held on the weekends for our young residents, and if you have the chance to maybe stop by for a playdate or a storytime on a Saturday morning, I hope you'll take advantage of it. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Coyle.
Good evening. I have no report this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Selchertz.
Good evening, thank you. There will be a fresh fruit and produce giveaway on Tuesday, October 28, starting at 3:00 PM roughly, in the parking lot of St. Elias Church on Memphis. Please, please do not arrive too early. Some people show up an hour and a half, two hours before. A few weeks ago, I mentioned that I had the chance to go to the Divert Ohio Conference, which was made up with a partnership of Keep Ohio Beautiful, the Association of Ohio Recyclers, and Ohio Association of Litter Prevention and Recycling Professionals. While I was at the conference, I had a chance to meet Jeff Snyder from Rumkey. He's Executive Vice President for them for recycling. Met him a few years prior down in Mohican at another conference. That meeting with him was fruitful, and that we could actually change, when it was time for the city to change where we dump our recycling, we could actually go with them. What I would recommend to residents is actually, and I thank the mayor and Mr. Snyder, is please listen to the mayor's podcast. There was enough information given on recycling, I know it sounds kind of boring, but you probably can ask the mayor about it. It lasted 40 minutes total. There's a lot of stuff that he explained, what gets recycled, what doesn't. All our stuff goes out to Broadview Heights and then down, down to Columbus, and it's just kind of neat how all that stuff comes around. I mean, you might have a cardboard box that you got rid of, it actually probably comes back as another cardboard box in seven to 10 days, which is just kind of fantastic. In this meeting's edition of Where's Ready Kilowatt, we still travel back to the streets of Ridge between the Laura and Glencoe. Really, nothing's changed. I think they got one light on North Cliff. Talking about first energy, we put in a work request for about 17 other fixtures. They finally found it and starting to work on it to get a quote, and we put an additional separate request in for additional light on a cul-de-sac, so that's moving along quickly. Last thing is leaf raking. Senior residents can sign up for leaf raking. At the Senior Center this year, working with the schools, there will be eighth graders going out, they will do the homes there near the school for the first half of day, and the second half of the day, buses will take the upperclassmen to the outlying homes in the area. The actual leaf raking will not happen till a date somewhere in November, middle of November, but it is happening this year, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Mosley.
Good evening, Brooklyn, and thank you, Council President. I want to start off by saying that I promise you that Ms. Grodick and I do not have the same report. 90% of my report, she did state, so I'll run through this really quick. I want to thank all the residents that stopped by for some portion of Brooklyn Home Days. I want to thank the members of council who stopped by at the event or sat at the table for a little bit of time. To piggyback on what Ms. Grodick said, the ongoing construction at the high school gymnasium has caused our polling stations to change. If you are in Ward B, you will vote at the Senior Center, and if you are in Ward D and G, you will temporarily, temporarily vote at MLK Church on Ridge Road. If you're unsure of where your polling station is, you can go on the County Board of Elections' website. If you look under the Ohio State flag, it says polling location lookup, and you can quickly find it there. Enter your address, and it'll tell you where your polling station is. I, too, also attended the grand opening of the Early Childhood and Resource Center. It's a fantastic building. I want to congratulate the schools on opening that for the community. And in closing, I want to remind the public that our annual budget work sessions are quickly approaching. There's one open to the public, and I encourage everybody to attend. It is next Monday in our community room, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Borowski.
Thank you, Council President. Over the past few weeks, I've had multiple resident concerns that required answers to and from help from multiple departments from across the city and fellow council members, such as Mr. Selhertz. Many of these issues have been resolved in timely fashion, and they remind me that we've got some of the best citywide services and providers in the county. So as always, thanks to all those in the departments that help us do our jobs. I'd like to also say thank you to Superintendent Claris for responding to me about safety concerns for students, staff, and drivers on bid-off when it comes to the school release times. I had a really good resident reach out to me earlier, middle of last week, bring up these issues and concerns to me, so I reached out to the police chief and Mr. Claris. Both obviously take the safety of all those involved very seriously, so thank you, chief and Mr. Claris, for all the help that you do for the city and the school district. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Tansky.
Thank you, good evening. This year's Home Days, which was held at the Brooklyn High School Stadium, was a huge success, with many residents and their families in attendance. There were a lot of fun activities for kids, live music, food trucks, and fireworks. I would like to give a special shout-out to the Chamber of Commerce, who sponsored the event, and a thank you to all the volunteers for their hard work in putting this community event together. It was nice to see a lot of the residents there, too. Trunk or Treat will take place on Thursday, October 23, from 6:30 PM to 7:30 PM at the Rec Center. Wear your Halloween costumes and bring your trick-or-treat bags to collect your goodies. This event is free, registration is required. Brooklyn businesses and groups interested in participating in this event can contact r-l-a-s-k-o-w-s-k-y at brooklynohio.gov. And, John, I think it was your service crew, Mr. Verba, that crack sealed Ridge Road, am I right?
That's correct.
That was an excellent job. That road is completely sealed from the freeway all the way down. I appreciate that. I'm sure the residents appreciate that, because there was a lot of money in that concrete that was put in that whole street. So I give A+ to that crack sealing. That concludes my report.
Thank you. I just have a couple items. First, I would like to thank the Chamber of Commerce, led by Karam Hasruni and his committee, who worked so hard on Home Days, which was a big success. There's a lot of work behind the scenes that goes into sponsoring an event like this. And also, thanks to Eric and Liz Dregney, who put on the big band blowout that was the second day of Home Days. That also takes a lot of work and effort, and we appreciate it. Just to expand a little about our budget work session that's coming up, it is Monday, October 20, at 6:00 PM in the community It is Monday, October 20th at 6:00 p.m. in the community room. As Councilman Mosley mentioned, this is a public meeting. All are welcome to attend. Our agenda is as follows. The five-year capital improvement plan and the 2026 capital budget, updated financial forecasts, capital improvement fund, street fund, capital reserve fund, a general fund preview, 2025 general fund projection, initial 2026 budget discussion, initial 2027 forecast. So anyone who's interested, you're more than welcome to attend. There's been numerous articles recently on the situation with property taxes in the state of Ohio. The governor had appointed a committee to look at this. And unfortunately, this committee really didn't come up with a plan to address the issue of the dramatically increasing property taxes. They came up with a list of options. There's also some disappointing proposed legislation in Columbus. There really aren't any solutions to the underlying cause, which is the state reducing funding that comes back to local governments and our public schools. There were two articles just in the last day or so. One focused on the parks and libraries. And then there was another article that had information from the Orange City Schools where they talked about what a devastating effect the proposed initiative would have, which I'll get to in a moment. We all agree that we need a solution to the rising property taxes. However, we need to be really cautious about supporting an initiative that would completely eliminate the property taxes. This proposal, if on, if it gets on the ballot and if it is adopted, would create an immediate crisis for most cities and public school systems. It calls for the elimination of property taxes. However, there is nothing in this initiative to, like, there's no plan on how these funds would be replaced. And it also would let the state off the hook for their role in this problem. Now, the city of Brooklyn does not rely on the property taxes. We heavily rely on our income tax. If property taxes are eliminated, the only other option would be to have income taxes increase, which voters would have to approve. This could also cause large disparities in the income tax rates across the county, which could impact the decisions of businesses whether to locate to a particular city or to even remain in a particular city. So even though the city itself is not heavily reliant on property taxes, it could impact us. I don't believe that this initiative is the answer to the problem. And I know if I'm approached, I'm not going to sign this initiative because of the devastating effect it would have if it would pass. I support property tax reform, but eliminating it without a plan on how to replace these funds for cities and schools is just not a prudent way to go. And that completes my report and I'll turn it over to the mayor for his report.
Thank you, Council President. I want to echo the success of Home Days, but I do have one criticism of that is that my, both my sons now want snakes because they had snakes at the Home Days and they both held them. So now they're petitioning for them and my wife said absolutely not. So we don't have to worry about that. But Karam, Kelly, you're here. You guys did an outstanding job. Very much appreciate that. And it will be a few, they will hold it next year. I know they're already working on dates for next year as well. So thank you so much for it came out. I was able to come out on Saturday for a few hours and we had a great time. And Wally did a great job with the car show as well. There's like 120 vehicles there. So, so kudos to everyone that was involved. It was, it was a wonderful city event. Just an update on a few things that are going on. The recreational facility planning continues as it's on the agenda tonight, but the, the city has selected a contractor to be our construction manager at risk. And if council approves it, Higley will continue their work. They've already begun some of their preliminary work on that. Right now, we're looking at a March 2026 start date for that construction. And they're saying January of, through January of 2027. And we'll see. We're planning about a year. They're saying 10 months. I like the 10 months, but we'll see. So we're moving forward with that. The off-road, or excuse me, the off-ramp heading eastbound off of Ridge Road, off of 480 Ridge Road is done. And so those, both those off-ramps are completely redone now. And then the on-ramps will be reconstructed next year. The Veterans Memorial Park upgrade continues. The pavilion structure is just about completed. And so they'll start putting the roof on that as well as the lower restroom. And the additional walking paths are ongoing as well. So they're making some great progress on Veterans Memorial Park. The dog park is finished. The grand opening for that will be this Thursday, October 16th at 10 a.m. So invite residents to come on out. It's supposed to be a beautiful day on Thursday. And that's located right next to our service garage. Both Mrs. Grodek and Mr. Mosley mentioned the citywide survey. I don't know if there was an uptick on, right around that time that it gave that information, but they are pleased with what we've received so far. But we would like to see more residents involved in that. And so I would encourage residents to go to countyplanning.us/brooklyn25. There's all kinds of information on the master plan that we're in right now, all the work that's been accomplished, as well as what we hope to accomplish in the coming years. And then we really want your opinion on what you want Brooklyn to look like over the next five, 10, 15, 20 years. And so we did extend the deadline for that survey to October 31st. We are now partnering with the school. We have a truncated version of the survey that's going out to our upperclassmen in the school to get their opinions. And also the city schools is also pushing it out to their families to get residents to complete the survey. So I would encourage residents to take a look at that. It is on, the QR code is on the newsletter. That's probably sitting somewhere in your house. So I would encourage residents to complete that. If you want to do a hard copy, they're available both here at City Hall and at the senior center. Other developers for the townhomes have, as I mentioned last meeting, have received their final site plan approval. They've already started the clearing of the properties and they will continue to do so. Their plan to start on the construction phase of that will actually be on Memphis Avenue. We don't anticipate the actual construction of the townhome starting until probably next year, but they have a lot of work to do on the interim. And so they have started clearing property on Rabbit Run and they'll continue both, on both Memphis locations here in the coming days. I want to thank Mr. Selhertz for recommending the Brooklyn Ohio Today podcast. I did have a very lengthy conversation with Mr. Snyder and it is not boring at all. In fact, it's fascinating, in my opinion. I did split it up between two podcasts. So both last week's and this week's that was actually released today. And it's amazing what they do with our material. Most of the recycled material in Brooklyn actually never leaves Ohio. It gets sent down to Columbus and distributed to various companies in our, in our state that make products from recycled material. And as Mr. Selhertz mentioned, many of them will end up back at your door at some point in the very near future. And so I would encourage residents to take a listen to that. And I learned a ton about it. And so Mr. Snyder is very engaging. He's very knowledgeable. So take a few minutes of your day and go onto that podcast, brooklynohiotoday.com. It's episode 23 and 24, I believe, of the two. And then also, a couple of people mentioned the voting locations. That is a little bit confusing. Mr. Mosley did mention it, but both of those will be posted on our social media accounts as we get closer to election day. And also, if you do show up at the school because you forgot, on the doors of the schools will also be posted where you need to go vote on election day. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll move on to requests. We have a liquor permit request as I reported on, in the committee of the whole report, for JJ3580 Ridge Road LLC. We need a motion to take a position of no objection.
So moved.
Second.
For petition, position of no objection, Sue Grodek.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Aaron Borowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Under notifications, Fire Department was awarded the Ohio Bureau of Workers Compensation Safety Intervention Grant in the amount of $31,106.26, which will be used to purchase one chest compression device and one powered stair chair for the Brooklyn Fire Department. Under legislation, old business, Resolution 2025-23, up for third reading and adoption. A resolution appointing a council member, a citizen, and an addiction specialist to serve on the opioid settlement advisory task force and declaring an emergency. I, at a previous meeting, was appointed to be the council representative. And this evening, we have two residents. We're going to amend the legislation to include their names. The first is resident Gina Stesny. The second is resident Joe Simbowski, Simbowski, sorry about that. And then the addiction specialist is resident Raquel Garrett. So we need a motion to amend our legislation to include those names.
So moved.
Second.
To amend, Sue Grodek.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Aaron Borowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
And now we need a motion to adopt as amended.
So moved.
Second.
To adopt as amended, Sue Grodek.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Aaron Borowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-24, also up for third reading and adoption. A resolution requesting the county fiscal officer to advance taxes from the proceeds of the 2025 tax levies pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section 321.34, and declaring an emergency. Any comments or questions? We need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
To adopt, Sue Grodek.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Aaron Borowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-27, which is on second reading, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Cuyahoga County Board of Health for Public Health Services for the years 2026 and 2027. Any comments or questions? Under new business, Resolution 2025-28, on first reading with a request to suspend the rules. A resolution approving the selection of the Albert M. Higley Company LLC, DBA Higley Construction, as best value construction manager at risk and authorizing an agreement for pre-construction services and declaring an emergency. Any comments or questions? We need a motion to suspend the rules, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules, Sue Grodek.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Aaron Borowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
We now need a motion to adopt, please.
So moved.
Second.
To adopt, Sue Grodek.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Aaron Borowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Next is resolution, excuse me, ordinance 2025-20, on first reading with a request to suspend the rules. An ordinance authorizing the updated capital improvement plan for 2025 and declaring an emergency. Any comments or questions? We need a motion to suspend the rules, please.
So moved.
Second.
Suspend the rules, Sue Grodek.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Aaron Borowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
We need a motion to adopt, please.
So moved.
Second.
To adopt, Sue Grodek.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Aaron Borowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Okay, that concludes our agenda items. At this time, if anyone in the audience has anything to say for the good and welfare of the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you will be recognized. Please remember to observe our five-minute time limit.
Good evening. Kelly Crawl, 10523 Manoa Avenue. First, I want to thank all the residents that attended the Home Days at the end of September. It was a fantastic event and really showcased our community pride. We had kids playing on the field together, no phones, and we literally had to kick them out at the end of the night. I would also like to thank all the sponsors and vendors that participated. This Saturday, October 18th, the preschool is holding a reading hour from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. for our littlest residents, ages three to five. Jason Hubbell will be the guest reader. Keep on the lookout for more monthly reading hours at the beck. I also want to remind residents that we are 21 days from the election. Four spots on council and two spots on the school board are open. Please take the next 21 days researching the candidates, asking questions, and fact-checking questionable comments in order to make an informed decision. There will be another informal meet the candidates night at 6:00 p.m. on October 28th at the new Brooklyn Early Childhood and Family Resource Center. Jason Hubbell and I will be on site and available to answer any questions residents have about the schools. We are doing great things with the renovations, finishing up the fall sports season and earning four stars on our report card. We hope to see you there. Our next board meeting is Tuesday, October 21st at 6:15 p.m. in the new Early Childhood and Family Resource Center. Come get caught up with what's happening in Brooklyn City Schools and check out the new facility. Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything to say for the good and welfare of the city of Brooklyn?
Surprise, surprise. Vic Ardito, 7439 Outlook Avenue. Regarding the get-together at the field, I like to make the Brooklyn booth was doing great. They were cooking the burgers and things. And Bob Hennings and his buddy were doing a great job and all the other volunteers. Are there, is there any outlook to hire any more people for the service department to help them catch up more? I've heard the city has the money because we seem to be spending it like wildfire. Mentioned it before. What are we spending on the guys to do the 480 ramps? I'm guessing we can hire a few people, but I don't know. And the rec department, I've got a couple of friends mentioning to me, a lot of our friends, we're all older. I don't go there, but they're complaining a lot of the machines are broken. Sometimes there's no lifeguards. Is there a reason for that? They can't find anybody, you know? Supposedly it's going to close down and they're remodeling. Putting it in another place. I don't know the exact things, but as things break, why can't they fix them? It seems normal to me, but again, I don't have a college degree and not an engineer.
Anyone else have anything to say for the good and welfare of the city of Brooklyn? Okay, anyone on council or the mayor have anything further?
May I be recognized? I just, since we finally passed the ordinance about the opioid settlement advisory board, I would just like to thank the residents. When we first proposed this, I thought, who in the world is going to want to be part of that advisory board? But we have residents who are willing to put, to put their expertise and their time in it, and I would just really like to thank them.
Anyone else have anything?
Yeah, Kathy.
Okay, yes.
Just to address Mr. Ardito, we did check that equipment. I had Jack go down there and the director go down there and he specifically went on each one of those piece of equipment. It is all working. But if there's a piece, he went down there. Well, I was on the phone with them.[1610.02] I had Jack go down there and the director go down there, and he specifically went on each one of those piece of equipment. It is all working. But if there's a piece, he went down, well, I was on the phone with them. If there's a piece of equipment that is not working, let me know. But we went over all that equipment and it was all plugged in and working. So if something goes down and he has to order a part, that might be go down for a little while. But other than that, they should all be up and running. Second thing is, Kathy, I'm glad you brought up those real estate taxes. I'll just give you my opinion. I've been going door to door a lot, and that's the first thing I get hit with is these high taxes. Elderly people and even younger people having a hard time paying those taxes. Some of them doubled. I know friends, some of them went more than double. I think a petition out there shouldn't have had to come to that because if that petition to get rid of taxes hits the ballot, they got a problem. I'm telling you right now, they got a problem, just from what I'm hearing. It shouldn't have went that far. The county and state should got something kind of reform put together to do something with these extreme taxes. Otherwise, I think they're going to get those signatures, and I think it's going to get on the ballot. And I, so they better come up with some reform plan. It shouldn't have went that far. Residents are struggling to pay those property taxes. And pensions and social security is not going up fast enough to cover those taxes. That concludes my conversation.